Good evening, I'd like to call to turn my mic on. I'd like to call to order the Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees regular meeting for Wednesday, May 14th, 2025 at 6:30 PM. If we would all please rise and pay our respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Noting of the roll, please.
Noted, there is a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion, prove the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. Item five, approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion, prove the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions?
I had one question.
Yes, sir, Trustee Wagner.
On page seventy-two.
If you bear with us a minute, page seventy-two. The clerk's report?
Clerk's report. I'm just interested in what drove the large negative variances for three of those items.
Clerk Wright?
Well, let me scroll down here if I can find it here. Are the negative variances from year-to-date?
Yeah.
Telecommunications, building department cable. Those are actually revenues in and expenses out, and that's your variance for the year. On that, what they are behind that, I don't have those answers at this point. I can definitely look at what the bills have been.
Actually, I was looking at the monthly variances, I'm sorry.
Monthly variances, same situation. Those should be in your packet for the bills.
Yeah.
For the monthlies.
That's why I was asking, I couldn't quite find where those, what was driving those.
Yeah, as far as revenue goes, that would be on the more on the treasurer's side because they take the monies in. And actually, revenue's not necessarily cash. It's just bills that have been generated to collect. But we can sit down, Trustee Wagner, and dissect them out if you'd like.
Yeah, I think it's something worthwhile to dig into.
Okay.
Offline, so that's fine. Thanks.
Just pick a time and get with me.
Thank you. Roll call?
Clerk Wright, yes, Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item six, public comment on items that are not on the agenda. So any member of the public would like to come up and speak on an item that's not on the agenda? We'll entertain that. We each get three minutes to talk, so. Hi.
Hi. My name is Margaret Culver. I'm resident on Delano Road, 3385 Delano Road. I have some handouts I'd just like to be talking about that I'd like to approach and give you.
Yeah, could you just bring them up, Margaret, please? Thank you. And if that green light's not on the mic, would you just press the button right there where it says?
Press the button now.
Push. Thank you.
The green light? I'm sorry. Oh, okay. I am, I think this is the appropriate time to speak. I am talking about a request to keep the berms around the gravel pit. And I don't know if that would be zoning consideration or whatever. But I think if we kept the berms there when they do their development, it would help a whole lot. Just keeping the trees and foliage there has great ecological advantages. Ninety percent of Americans say trees and green spaces contribute to their mental well-being. It positively impacts the property values, lowers crime rates. And eighty-nine percent of Americans say it boosts curb appeal, reduces noise pollution, and provides for a safe neighborhood atmosphere. And I know from visiting Florida, there are two counties. One county is less expensive than the other, and you can tell. The minute you cross the border from the less expensive county to the more expensive county, the foliage along the road, you can't see the homes, you can't see you know, it's a totally different atmosphere. And it really, really helps the community. And I think it would definitely help separating that dense development from the horse country. And that's the second thing I wanted to bring to your attention that you might not realize, but horse economy is something you want to keep in this area and you want to support in this area. And if you have the berms there, it's helping to separate the development from the rural area. And if you take a look at some of the highlights of horse economy, we support twenty-two million jobs linked both directly and indirectly to the equine sector. These include breeders, trainers, veterinarians, farriers, truck drivers, nutritionists, chemists, and owners. And you can see various areas of recreation, competition we have in this area, and equine assisted services.
Margaret, we're getting out our three minutes.
Done?
Yeah.
Well, hopefully you can take a look at how horses impact the local economy here. And it's something that you should be working to preserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone? Oh, Barbara.
Hi there. My name is Barbara Blannick. I live at 3601 Barbara Road. And I've met many of you several times as we are here to always defend the horse country. And you guys do a pretty good job of helping us to maintain the environment that's required. I have one question to you in terms of the proposed master plan for the gravel pit. And I realize the long, the pure road is going to be commercial. And then within the levee property of the gravel mining, there's going to be condos and apartments and houses, et cetera. And probably over a hundred buildings in there building the community. But as you go east, the levee property goes up to North Oxford Road. And when you get to that section, that's in horse country, where the zoning currently is ten miles, excuse me, ten acres minimum. And as you go a little north to Oakwood, it jumps up to twenty. So I would ask you to reconsider what you're potentially planning along North Oxford on the west side, the levee side, making it digressive down to two-and-a-half acre parcels. And I just think that that would be out of context with what the horse country is trying to maintain. So I would like you to reconsider that, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members of the public? Oh, Brian?
Good evening. Brian Klutier, Director, Oxford Public Libraries. I'm here this evening to share with you that if you've not received your newsletter in your mailbox, I shared some with you tonight. This is our one-hundredth anniversary edition, so we're very pleased to be able to present all of the information that you will want to know in terms of summer reading for our summer reading program at the library in addition to the one-hundredth anniversary celebration gala and fundraiser event that will be held at India Wood Garden Club on July 25th, 2025. That is the official one-hundredth anniversary day for the library, too. So it just kind of happens to be cool that they kind of fall on the same day. So tickets are available for the fundraiser event through the library's website at myopl, M-I-O-P-L dot org. And all of the information you need to know for that event, as well as all of the other extracurricular activities centered around the one-hundredth anniversary are also on that website and in your newsletter. So we're looking forward to celebrating with you. It's an honor to be only the fifth head librarian this community has had in a hundred years. It says a lot about this community and this library, so thank you for being part of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to item seven, Board of Trustee comments. We'll start with Trustee Colvin tonight.
I have nothing at this time.
Clerk Wright?
A couple of things. The clerk's office will be closed on Thursday, May 22nd, from about 10:30 to 2:30. We have some mandatory election training to go to, and I need all my staff, myself, to be present on that, so. And if Communications Manager Kernaki wants to put a post on that, that'd be appreciated as well. Also, tomorrow, May 15th, is Peace Officers Memorial Day. Flags are ordered by the governor to be at half-staff in all public facilities, including local facilities. So if you're in a public facility, please obey that that day tomorrow. Those are my comments so far. Supervisor Curtis.
Thank you. Treasurer Ferrari?
I don't have any at this time.
Thank you. Trustee Wagner?
Yeah, one quick comment. I was honored to be able to participate in and support the Oxford Addison Youth Awards on May 2nd. From my standpoint, it was quite the pleasure to witness the recognition of the kids for their selfless actions and behaviors. So kudos to them.
Thank you. Trustee Charles?
Couple of things, since David just brought up the Oxford Addison Youth Assistance Group. It was nice to have him join us there, along with our state representative, Josh Fryver. It was a great, great opportunity to recognize kids that represent our community in a very positive way. Another thing here, too, I'll mention that the DDA is working on the speaker system. If you're downtown, it hasn't worked. There's been some issues with the broadcast system, the Bluetooth. And there's another thing coming up, the DDA, too, the gazebo downtown. There's some money being spent to redo that, replace the railings, the electric system. And one thing the board might want to think about, too. The village manager put together the budget for the DDA and the Township 2025-2026 budget includes $291,000 contribution from Oxford Township. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. I'll address a couple of things right now. To Mrs. Culver's statement regarding the berms around the gravel pit, that is an active gravel pit. Those berms are going to remain there in my lifetime. They're going to be mining gravel for a minimum of twenty years. So the berms and the trees will grow. There's even going to be replacement of the trees that died this winter. So we are working. Ruben Maxbauer's been wonderful to work with as far as government relations, bringing people in, showing them the pit, and experiencing it inside. You don't even know what's going on in there, but it's great. The berms themselves, right now, they're going to stay there. I can't write it in an agreement, but once that dirt was put there, that cost them over $5 million to move that dirt, which is overburden, from the mine up onto those berms. So probably in twenty years, when they go to develop that, someone will have to look at it to make sure they maintain them. But it's highly unlikely they're going to tear them down. Secondly, the master plan does show commercial on M24, Barbara. It does get into some RM, residential multiple, and then it does get into suburban farms. So as you move away from M24, it does get higher density to the berms. And then after that, you have all the beautiful farms up in that country. So we are looking at that, making sure nothing east of the berms is touched as far as zoning and keeping the equine businesses floating in that area. Number three, kudos go out to the staffs of the clerk, treasurer, and building department. Yesterday, they had three second-grade class comes in, come in. The second graders were taught how to register to vote, how to pull a building permit, how to pay their taxes. But Danielle, Susan, Stacy, Sarah, Tracy, I'm going to forget somebody in there, but all the ladies worked really hard. It's great to see the kids show interest. I believe this is the fifth year this is done, so.
We think so.
Yeah. Exponentially, we're training these young children on what to expect when they come into government offices and what they have to do to register to vote, what they have to do to pay their taxes and such. So kudos go out to them. Other than that, I'm going to move on to item number eight, presentation. 2024 Audit Financial Report, Raina Hammond from PSLZ CPAs. Raina, good evening.
Good evening. Nice to be here this evening.
Thank you.
I'm pleased to present the annual audit financial statements for the Charter Township of Oxford for your fiscal year ended December 31st, 2024. The Township did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion. So no exceptions, no disclaimers, nothing bad to report. In layman's terms, a clean audit opinion. The, starting off with some highlights, property taxes, your largest source of revenue, up eight percent this year. It's all taxable value. That's not millipides, obviously, you had rollbacks and things like that, but your taxable value just on the property alone is eight percent this year. In comparison, the year before was 4.6 percent. So we took a nice jump this year. State shared revenue increased only slightly, about 1.7 percent. The state is working on some things. We're not looking at any big increases next year. They're still deciding whether they want to spend money on state year revenue, roads, that type of thing. So stay tuned with that. Of course, interest income, the interest earned this year by the township, up thirty-four percent over the prior year. And the year before was exponential. So nice work, Treasurer Ferrari. Ultimately, the general fund added $29,679 this year. The real story here is that the township did so many capital projects within the township. I mean, you've kept all your operating expenditures very stable, but you were able to accomplish all these capital improvements, including the Seymour Lake and Lakeville Road Safety Pass, Township Hall new roof door access system, cemetery wall restoration and cemetery paving, police substation expansion. It goes on and on. You have about 2.2 million in capital improvements this year that in addition to that, you had water and sewer, that's not counting your water and sewer improvements. That was another 4.8 million this year. So you've got a lot done this year. I know the trustees and Supervisor Curtis, you all work as a team, a lot of aspects. Supervisor Curtis does a great job bringing it all from beginning to the end. So we get a lot of things done here. Paid down debt, 745,000 of debt this year. This year, we also added the North Area Sewer Special Assessment Bonds. So you'll see that, that's new this year in the audit. So, let's see, so defined benefit plan. Let's talk about the pension plan quickly. The, you are at eighty-three percent funded. The year before, you were at seventy-five percent funded. Two things bumped us up to eighty-three percent, which is more where we want to be, of course. The state requirement is sixty percent. So we're well above that, but no one here is comfortable at sixty percent. So even seventy-five percent, we're much happier at the eighty-three percent funding level. Two things, in this fiscal year, we're reporting on the trust assets, so the investments, had an investment gain this year of 778,000 dollars. The year before, we had like a $700,000 loss. So we made up for it and then some. And also, the second thing is that the township, once again, added extra contributions of $325,000. And those two things, mostly the extra contributions really moved the needle a lot. So we're in the right direction, and I hope that you're happy with the eighty-three percent funded because that's a good place to be. Yeah. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
I have one. Raina, last year, you recommended we get above eighty. So eighty-three is a good number to be at this year. And a possible pension contribution is not really required.
Correct.
Okay. Board members, questions for? On the I see none. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone, the township departments and staff. Everyone was very accommodating, appreciate all your hard work, and that's how we get here in Maine. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I used to have, I used to have hair. Danielle pulled it out, making me do this stuff. Okay, moving on. Item nine, assessing.
You have a motion, don't you?
Oh, we have to put that in file, don't we?
I'll make a motion to receive and file the Oxford Township 2024 Audit Financial Report.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Wagner. Any questions?
It was Trustee Charles.
Oh, it's Trustee Charles.
It's okay. He sits next to me, that's okay. It's close. We live a lot.
I must settle down, I'm excited, okay. Here we go. Let's get this done. Trustee Charles seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call?
Trustee Charles?
Yes.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. All right, now we'll move on to item nine. Board members, back in March, I came to you and shared that the Oakland County Board of Commissioners was reviewing an assessing contract that would impact municipalities which currently use Oakland County equalization. Due to their increasing cost and our ability to be financially responsible, we sent out bids, request for pricing is what we said, created and uploaded to Mitten. At this time, we had a bid from Assessment Administration Services LLC. And I've invited the Griffins to come here tonight to answer any of your questions regarding their costs, services, and what we'd be getting for the money. Anybody who'd like to start with questions, raise your hand and I'll call on you. Treasurer Ferrari?
Hi, guys. How's the transition been from county units to you guys?
We, I'd like to give you a kind of little background on how we got started.
Sure.
In 2009, we, we've been in the assessment business for years. In 2009, we got started by helping communities that were getting in trouble. They would lose their role or have problems, they needed help. So we would go in and help them fix that. And that naturally morphed into, well, now that you fixed us, can you stay? And we started just doing the assessment administration for communities. And it's thrived over the years. We usually get a community year or two by word of mouth, we don't advertise. We started in McComb County and it was expanding, we've been six counties. We have a big staff, we have eight Level fours on staffs. There's, because we, most of it done fixing problems, there's nothing that any problem that you would have that would have been fixed. So we've done very well with that. We have not taken over, we've got a couple of communities that were done by Oakland County that we're taking over now, but we have not taken one that was done by Oakland County. I'm sure Oakland County's record cards and everything will be fine, and we'll move on. Because we've taken on communities and left them alone for years and had real issues. But we've worked in a lot of counties, municipalities on the Oakland County system. For instance, I retired from Oakland Township, spent a lot of time there. We currently are doing Auburn Hills, we do the city of Northville. And now we're starting to pick up some communities in Oakland County, and that's a transitional, be fine. Because I don't, I don't expect the record card to be the basis of any advancement.
Trustee Wagner?
What have been your biggest lessons learned when you've taken over in assessment activity?
I tell all the communities when we take over is, we'll put in our proposal, what we're going to do and how we're going to do it. But every community is different, and we've done a lot of them, they're all different. So we like to tell everybody, we'll set it up, but everybody can keep an open mind. And we'll give you maybe make some changes that you want and get it to where everybody's comfortable. And at the end, you know, for us, it's Supervisor, Treasurer, they've got enough to deal with. So we'll make sure that the job gets done and you don't have to worry about any of the issues and day-to-day stuff. That'll be the goal, but we just got to keep it open mind, set it up to where it's comfortable, everybody feels comfortable with the way it's been done. Just trying to do it the same way in every community isn't going to work because every community is different. They have different needs. More people on staff, they want, you know, less people, depends on what they want.
Thank you. Trustee Charles?
First of all, thank you Supervisor Curtis for initiating this and getting it going. And there might be other departments we need to examine along the same lines since they're relying on Oakland County, since I think we've been mistreated by Oakland County. What's an example of a problem you've run across? You mentioned fixing problems. How about a concrete example?
Give you an example, it was last October, November, we got contacts about the senior warrant, and the assessor had been let go. And they didn't have anybody else staff that could take care of the warrant and get it done by the end of the year. So we came in with our staff and cleaned it up, got them through the end of the year, and then they could go out and try to find the assessor and hire an assessor. We did that just as nice here. And part of the reason we can even be here is because of business model is to go out and help communities that get in trouble and fix them. We've always kept select staff for doing that. Even though we did twenty-six units, we always had extra staff set aside for doing that. Now that we can go forward and these units are all coming up at the same time, it makes a difference. We obviously can't do them all, so we're only going to pick and choose the ones that make sense for us. You folks would make absolute sense because we're already doing Auburn Hills and we're going to do our own township, it's a perfect fit. We had the extra staff, yeah, otherwise you'd be, you'd struggle to try to do it. Now, if someone calls us, or calls us like a month ago, and says they have a problem getting to a visitor and say, you can't do it, we've set staff aside for these specific communities. And we'll take care of them.
Thank you. You have another question, sir?
Yeah. In the proposal, you indicate you would have somebody here at least one, one day a week? Is that what you're?
Yes. Yes.
Okay.
We've already set aside three staff people that may change before we get here in July, but it'll be the three people right now we set aside to certify, to sort of give them a good experience. And they'll come in and we'll make sure everything's done, done well.
Okay, one more?
One more, I promise. When will this changeover take place?
Be July 1st, right?
Yes, sir. July 1st.
Okay.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? I, oh, I'm sorry, Clerk Wright?
No. Oh. I'm going to come back.
How many Level fours do you have?
Eight.
How many does the county have?
I'm sure they have quite a few.
I I don't know, but I was impressed with the number of villages, cities, townships, counties that you're in. Is there going to be a problem taking us on now?
No.
Yeah.
No, no. It'll be seamless.
Okay. Clerk Wright?
Yeah, my concern, a couple of these, not negative or anything, but how do you handle special assessment districts?
There's a module in the system and we'll, we can, we'll take care of, we've done special assessments for all kinds of communities, all of the state, and there'll be no issue.
So you'd create the role for us, then?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right. And then Freedom of Information Act request?
The data's available because we have access to the rule. And the Freedom of Information Act will supply you what you need.
All right. All right.
Running reports that are needed and we'll be taking care of it.
All right. And then if we move forward, the, I'm doubt there'll be a contract?
Yes.
Okay. And then the invoicing will be indicated in the contract?
Yeah, we're pretty flexible about that. Most units do it monthly, some they want to do it quarterly.
Okay. All right, I'll leave it at that.
Trustee Colvin, any questions? With that, yes, sir, Treasurer Ferrari?
Once you guys reach your limit, you're done, right? Like, let's say, the proper way, and I've talked to Supervisor Curtis about this, sit back, analyze, and make a decision. We're kind of under the gun here.
Right.
Where let's say, we say, we don't want to go this route, and we want to study more. Now we want to go this route in two months. You guys could be a full number done.
We will be full.
And you don't have that option.
Yeah, I mean, there's really, in my opinion, there's only two companies in the state that have staff in the ability to do this.
WAC?
WCA.
WCA, I'm sorry.
Other than that, I wouldn't expect to get anybody.
And you guys use the county system as well.
We do both. We have, we have, some of our units are on their own, some are on the county. We actually have two units that are on the cloud. So we've got some experience with the cloud.
So what we're on now, you can adapt to it.
Absolutely. Okay. Auburn Hills is on the same system, we all know.
Thank you.
You're really familiar with plans.
All set?
I move to work the bid for assessing services to Assessment Administration Services LLC, or three years.
a three-year contract in the amount of $138,960 for year one, $144,480 for year two, $150,240 for year three. This contract will be in effect from July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2028. I further move to authorize Supervisor Jack Curtis to sign the contract on behalf of the Charter Township of Oxford.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, and I have a second by Trustee Charles. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, with the board of work.
And we still have a meeting next week, or beyond, and we'll sit down.
We'll get together and put some plans together and make this thing work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on. Uh, ju- 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 ju, item 10, 10A, zoning ordinance 67A dot 037, definitions and zoning district regulations. Uh, board members, uh, at the April 9th, you moved it on me.
Yeah, I did. I'll be able to blow it up for you.
Okay, that's fine. Uh, the April 9th regular board meeting, um, was voted to, uh, conduct the first reading of the draft zoning ordinance. Uh, this is, uh, the ordinance 67A dot 37, oh, 37. It relates to the state licensed daycare facilities and auto convenience marts being special land uses in the industrial zoning I-1 and I-2 districts. Uh, the board voted, also voted to table the adoption of the draft zoning ordinance, language as it relates to animal definitions, uh, per the recent case law at the state. These amendments will be revisited by the township's staff to assess if they should move forward or prematurely discarded. Uh, proposed text amendment zoning ordinance?
I move to set the second reading for proposed text amendments to zoning ordinance 67A point 037, for the Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees meeting on June 11, 2025.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, a second by Trustee Colvin. I see a question, I can hear it now, go ahead.
Can you hear it? Yeah, um, my, my concern is on the state licensed daycare facilities. Uh, we have no definition of child in our zoning ordinance. So, what I'd like to do is set with, uh, planer, pass a law with tomorrow and, uh, talk about that. And then I also have a concern about the, uh, issue about, uh, increased capacity. So, I will talk with him tomorrow on that, and if there's issues, we'll come back for a second reading.
Clear it up at the second reading. Okay. For a motion?
Already done.
Oh, it's already done, that's right. Roll call. Wow.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. I was at the high school this morning, very early. Um, 10B, zoning ordinance 67A dot 040, rezoning request for parcel 04 dash 21 dash 200 dash 002. Uh, board members, uh, this is the property on Market Street. 002 is going from C1 zoning to R1 zoning. Uh, um, the developers come in, not the developer, the landowner had three offers on the property. They came in wanting to build businesses, wanting to build businesses with apartments up above. And then a third one came in and wanted building, uh, three-story apartments. So, what happened, is that 05 or is that 02?
02, 05, no.
Okay, 02 is gonna go to, uh,
RM.
Yeah, RM. And what he did, the, the owner of the property presented to the planning commission, uh, a residential multiple consisting of, uh, a single family attached like along Stony Lake Road. All the details of that'll have to be worked out once engineering is done and things. But the planning commission recommended, uh, zoning change, and, um, I'd like to move to approve the first reading and to set the second reading for the proposed zoning map amendment to the zoning ordinance for parcel 67A dot 040, for parcel ID 04 dash 21 dash 200 dash 002, for June 11, 2025, for the Charter Township Oxford Board of Trustees meeting.
I'll second that.
Okay, Supervisor Curtis moved. Trustee Colvin seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes, and Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. And board members just across the street on the lake itself, um, the three previous potential purchasers wanted to do the same thing on the lake. The residents came out in droves and explained what they'd like. They'd like to continue houses on the lake, like are on the lake. Um, and, uh, the owner of the property is seeking zoning to R1 for parcel 005. So, I move to approve the first readings and to set the second reading for the proposed zoning map amendment to zoning ordinance 67A dot 041, for parcel ID 04 dash 21 dash 200 dash 005, for June 11, 2025, Charter Township of Oxford Board of Trustees meeting.
I'll second.
Supervisor Curtis moved. Trustee Colvin seconded. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Thank you. Uh, we just did item B and C concurrently. So, we are on item 11. Uh, 11A is the zoning ordinance 67A dot 038, proposed zoning map amendment for 970 and 990 South Lapeer Road. It's a corner drainer in Lapeer. Uh, the planning commission and our first reading was done to change that zoning, and tonight, we're opposing changing the zoning map. So, I look for a motion?
I move to, uh, a motion, I make a motion to adopt the proposed zoning map amendment, zoning ordinance 67A point 038 for 97990 South Lapeer Road, also known as parcel ID 0426353028, and 0426353029, rezoning both parcels from office only designation to C, C2 general commercial designation.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions? Seeing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Uh, item 12, fire department. I talked to chief, he's got nothing to report tonight. Uh, item 13, Sharp Engineering Report is included in your packet. Uh, board members, if you have any questions at this time, Engineer Sharp is here and he can answer them. Hearing none, we'll move on to item 14, 14A. Under unfinished business notification to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources regarding proposed watercraft control on Indian Wood Lake. Uh, board members, as you remember, uh, these, there were two lakes on our, uh, public hearing at one time, uh, Manitou Lake and Indian Wood Lake. We share both those lakes with Orion Township. Uh, having, uh, the board at Orion turned down the proposed amendment change, we have no action required on it. However, we have to respond by Monday to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, and, uh, the Township Board of Orion will be meeting and discussing this. They kept theirs open on Indian Wood Lake Road because they have more residents that, that are on that lake, and they wanted to get more input from residents. So, it was, uh, advised to us through council that we should approve this amendment, because if we approve it and they deny it, it will be denied. But if we deny it, they will also have to deny it. We wanna give their residents an opportunity to come in and speak, whether they wanna accept it or not. So, us accepting it allows them to have their residents come in.
I move to approve the first reading, the special watercraft rule for Indian Wood Lake, as prepared by the MDNR pursuant to MCL 324.80110.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Colvin. Are there any questions?
Question.
Uh, trust, Clerk Wright?
Yeah, just wanna make sure, uh, Attorney Ellis will be responding to the, uh, state on our behalf.
Attorney Ellis and I've already spoke. She has until midnight on the 20th to respond to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources.
Okay.
I will let them know whatever action we take tonight.
All right, great.
Thank you. Trustee Charles.
So, for us to accept it gives the state an opportunity to deny it?
No, it gives Orion the opportunity to deny it.
To clarify, okay, so, there's two, there is two proposed ordinances from DNR. One for Lake Manitou and one for Indian Wood Lake. Orion denied Manitou Lake. By law, both, the ordinance has to be approved by both municipalities. So, this board tonight does not have to take any action on Manitou Lake. For Indian Wood Lake, the township board at Orion, when they held their first reading, they received no resident input. No residents showed up to speak for Indian Wood Lake. So, they have to postpone it to their next meeting, which is Monday, for their first reading. Unfortunately, we're up against the 60-day deadline to make a decision. So, I was asked to relay that the Town, Orion Township would like Oxford to approve first reading for Indian Wood Lake tonight, so that Orion has the opportunity to consider it Monday night with the resident input that they're seeking. If they deny it, it will not come back to this board. If they approve it, it will come back to this board for second reading, you'll have another opportunity. So, that's the process.
Yep. She said it a little more eloquently than myself.
It's all the time she's spitting up water, that's why.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 14C, proposed 2025 Orion Township master plan. Trustee Wagner.
Oxford, Oxford.
What did I say?
Warren.
Wow. Man, I gotta get that checked.
Uh-oh.
Proposed 2025 Oxford Township master plan. Trustee Wagner.
All right, thank you. So, master plan changes requested by the board, um, at the last meeting were reviewed by the planning commission and incorporated into the master plan here tonight for review and approval. So, I like to motion to approve the 2025 draft master plan to be distributed to all entities required under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act of, of 2008, section 41, for the required 63-day period.
Second.
I have a motion by Trustee Wagner and a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Item 14C, ordinance review committee request for funding. Trustee Wagner.
Yeah, so, page 355 describes the, the revisions of the ordinance work plan since the last township, uh, board review. The proposed work plan is present in the packet, starting on page 350, 357, and reflects the changes requested by the township board during their March 12, 2025 regular meeting. Motion to improve the 2025 ordinance review committee work plan and budget not to exceed $13,750. This $13,750 amount to be expensed to account 101 dash 701 dash 801 dot 000, Planner Professional Services.
Second. I have a motion by Trustee Wagner and a second by Treasurer Ferrari. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Treasurer Ferrari.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Okay, thought the time was up. 14D, Personnel Committee, Trustee Colvin.
Okay.
Item I, Employee Handbook Amendments.
Okay, um, the Personnel Committee was asked to review the employee handbook and make some updates. Um, we got feedback from, uh, several of the board members, and we reviewed all of, all of, uh, everything everybody wanted us to, uh, look at. We did make some changes. You have a redlined copy in your, um, in your packet. Uh, the changes were actually not very large. Um, a lot of them were just clarifying certain things. Um, the big changes, I think, we did eliminate the requirement, um, for tuition reimbursement. As long as you pass a class, you can get your tuition reimbursed. We took out the percentages. And I think the other big change was, um, for the township vehicle. Um, if the township vehicle is available, uh, we're going to require you to use the township vehicle rather than getting your mileage expensed. Um, we figure if the township has this vehicle, we might as well be using it. So, those are the big ones. Um, I don't know if there's anything else that anyone reviewed that has questions on. No.
I'll entertain questions before a motion. Yes, sir.
What's the process for using the township vehicle? Is there a sign-up process, or what?
Process is, if it's there, you take it. If you wanna reserve it for a long trip or a certain date, you write it on the board, the keys are hanging on the board, uh, you fill out, uh, I wanna use the township vehicle on Friday from 8:00 to 10:00, and I use it. And I bring it back clean, all the junk out of it, and full of gas, and, uh, it's ready for the next person. Any questions?
I, you have one, maybe one question. It, it talks about this, you know, being highly discouraged of using your own personal vehicle. How is that gonna be implemented? How does that work?
We're all adults.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
We haven't made a motion.
Oh, I thought I heard, oh, see, we ask questions.
Questions first.
You guys are tricking me. I look, I'll make a motion to approve the employee handbook amendments as made.
I think you wanna probably be more specific.
Could you pull that motion, please, for Supervisor Curtis?
Oh, I can read it. I move to approve the Oxford Township Employee Handbook with amendments to section Employment of Relatives, Non-Exempt Employees' Operational and Working Hours, Overtime, Compensatory Time, Overtime, PTO Awards, PTO Donations, Use PTO Upon Separation From Employment, uh, Medical and Hospitalization Insurance, Dental Insurance, Tuition Reimbursement, Mileage, Use of Township Vehicles, Attendance and Tardiness, Prohibited Conduct, Corrective or Discipline Action, Ex- Access to Employee Personnel Records, Workplace Safety, Reporting a Violation of Illegal Harassment or Discrimination, Internet and Email Use, Social Media, Leave of Absences, Medical Leave, Non-FMLA, Voluntary Separation, and Receipt of Employee Handbook, and Employment at Will Statement to be effective May 14, 2025.
I'll second.
A motion by Supervisor Curtis, a second by Trustee Colvin. Now, are there any questions?
Right Township, correct.
Yeah, now you woke me up, boy, I'm ready. That Red Bull kicked in. Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Colvin.
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari.
No.
Uh, we got Trustee Charles.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Supervisor Curtis.
Yes. Motion carries. Item, uh, 14D2, uh, Trustee Colvin.
Okay. Personnel Committee was also asked to look at the, uh, hours for the Oxford Township building, um, and the office. Uh, we did a, a review, um, it's in your packet of all of the communities, uh, and the surrounding areas, the hours they work.
We did a review, it's in your packet, of all of the communities, the surrounding areas, the hours they worked, when they're open, closed, et cetera. Many communities around us are closed on Fridays. This includes the Village of Oxford and Orion. Several other communities are closed a lot more often. They tend to be smaller. So we did a review. We decided that we, in order to maybe try to be better serving our township residents, we thought it would be better to be open a little bit later, four days a week, and then close on Friday. And we thought we'd try this out for the summer only, just to see what kind of feedback we would get and so that we could be better serve our residents having a little more time for them to get here during the week. And so we came up with a proposal to be open from eight to five thirty, Monday through Thursday, and closed on Friday, just Memorial Day through Thursday.
I move that effective Monday, May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, through Saturday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-five. The Charter Township of Oxford Office, located at three hundred Dunlap Road, hours of operation will be as follows. Monday, eight AM to five thirty PM, Tuesday, eight AM to five thirty PM, Wednesday, eight AM to five thirty PM, Thursday, eight AM to five thirty PM, Friday closed, Saturday closed, Sunday closed. Lunch periods will reduce from one hour to one half hour, Monday through Thursday. Further, Oxford Township, non-exempt employees, with the exception of the executive administrative assistant to the County Sheriff's Office substation, shall have the hourly rate of pay adjusted to match their salary rate per the approved twenty twenty-five General Appropriations Act. Further, at the Wednesday, September tenth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting, the Charter Township Oxford Board Trustees' will determine whether to extend the above stated hours of operation or change the hours and days of operation.
Second. I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari, I have a second by Supervisor Curtis. Questions, please. Yes, Trustee Charles?
I look at this, I, for as long as I'm on the board, we always benchmark Milford quite frequently, is that right? A lot of the proposals we've seen?
We've, we've benchmarked a lot of townships.
Well, I hear Milford more than most, but I see out here that Milford is open on Friday from eight AM till four. My thoughts are that this is a service type of business and I can't see closing entirely on Fridays. I can see abbreviated hours, but not entirely on Fridays. That just, like I said, in a service business, which I was involved in many years.
Well, to answer your question, Trustee Charles, more than one community besides Milford was reviewed, including the Village of Oxford where most, a lot of the residents live. Like communities like Delhi and such have hours that are different.
I'm looking at Milford, it says seven thirty to five thirty, Monday through Thursday, closed Friday.
Thank you, Treasurer Ferrari.
I missed the... I'm looking at the previous one, that they're open eight to four, right?
Yep, the previous is not current.
But regardless, I just think in a service industry, it closes down entirely on Fri... Maybe part-time or something abbreviated, it just strikes me as odd in a service industry.
Thank you.
Close down on Fridays.
Anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir, Trustee Wagner?
I mean, is it really reasonable to reduce? Have a lunchtime that's only thirty minutes long? How is it even possible to go out and get a sandwich, come back and eat it within thirty minutes?
You know?
Can I answer that?
Sure.
Most of us don't leave.
Yeah.
Most of us don't leave the office unless we have an errand to run. Most of us brown bag it or we order delivery.
Uber Eats, Jimmy John's, I see them all pull up here and don't see our people leaving every day. How is it possible?
It's not.
They eat at their desk all day at work. Yes, sir, Treasurer Ferrari?
I like this for the summer, right? That's, I'm glad it's only trial period. Because in the summer, we've got, what, three, three months maybe, decent weather? And to me, summer hours, a lot of businesses do summer hours. Now, if this was all year round, I might definitely take a look at it. I think once September comes, the community may want to review and say, okay, let's figure maybe something else, maybe like an eight to twelve on Friday. But I think we should at least try this out and see how it goes. And if it doesn't work, we'll change it.
Are there any other questions? Hearing none, roll call.
Trustee Wagner?
Yes.
Trustee Charles?
No.
Trustee Colvin?
Yes.
Clerk Wright, yes. Treasurer Ferrari?
Yes.
And Supervisor Curtis?
Yes. Okay. Wake up, Jack. No new business tonight. Item sixteen, we had nothing removed from consent agenda, although Trustee Wagner needs to sit down with Clerk Wright and get his questions answered. Item seventeen, is there any members of the public that would like to make a comment?
So, are we going to work something out so we can make our own transfers? The library isn't closed on Friday. We still have to function, we still have to pay our bills, and we're at the mercy of the township to transfer our funds. So if we have a situation where we have a Friday and we need funds transferred, am I calling you home?
Call my cell phone. I've, I've got a laptop, so I'm always on. So just call me, I'll take care of it.
I, I fix sewer repairs twenty-four hours a day. Water. Joe carries his computer.
We need to make sure that when we're at the mercy of the township for services to be done, that they're taken care of.
Thank you, Brian. Okay. No other questions? No other comments, public? Thank you. Board of Trustees' comments? Trustee Charles?
None.
Trustee Wagner?
Uh, no comments.
Treasurer Ferrari?
No comments of this guy.
No comments from Supervisor Curtis? Clerk Wright?
Uh, maybe a reminder that Seymour Celebration is June fifth through the eighth, so if you're inclined to attend, please feel free. It's a nice event. Thank you.
Thank you. And Trustee Colvin?
Enjoy the nice weather.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion by Treasurer Ferrari and a second by Trustee Colvin to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed can stay.